If you could, I'd like to call up tonight's meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to March 14th Goodrich Village Council Meeting. It is noted that the Administrator is absent and Councilman Horton, both on vacation.
Mr. President, before we go any further in the minutes, can we add we like weapons drained to get into person?
No, we will not. Still pending legislation. The, uh, tonight, I would like to start with the approval of the agenda. Forget if that, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Approve the agenda for March 14th, 2016.
I'll support that. Roll call, please.
McCafferty.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes. Now, the approval of the minutes, special council meeting, February 4th.
Question on that, Mr. President. Looking at these, um, minutes here, I see there's a motion to go into executive session, close session, for the opinion of the Attorney. Uh, I know that you had read a pretty specific motion, uh, for us to go in there, and I'm not seeing it on there. Uh, so we can either address that now, or I would almost recommend that, uh, we table these minutes, um, until you can bring that, uh, motion in that you read and approve of the next call.
I agree. I don't see where there's, uh, it's all that important if we approve that tonight or next month. So, let's table that and we'll move on to the next item, which is our regular council meeting, February the 8th. Yeah, let's pass that back to.
Right.
Have the closed meetings. Once again, the regular council meeting on February the 8th. Questions on the minutes? Discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion to be accepted.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes, February 8th.
I'll support that. Roll call, please.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maureen.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes. The Treasurer's report, purple sheet.
Did you want to do the closed session?
Let's hold off on that. Let's table it.
All right.
Treasurer's report, purple sheet.
I think a motion we accept the Treasurer's report from March 14th, 2016.
Support.
Any other discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maureen.
Yes.
Dick.
No.
Baldwin.
Yes. Bills and transfers. Green sheet. Discussion? Looking for someone to make a motion.
Make a motion, we accept bills and transfer from 201, 2016 to 229, 2016.
Support.
Roll call, please.
McCafferty.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes. First round of public comment. Please, agenda items only. Please address the Chair.
Good evening. Tricia Wartella. Um, Mr. Baldwin, you just went through the meeting minutes, and I just want to clarify what just happened. We had a copy appear at the table for all the people attending the meeting. You have a copy of February 4th, 2016, special council meeting minutes, and you also have a copy of the February the 8th, uh, regular council meeting minutes. Which meeting minutes did you table until they're adjusted? I can understand.
That was a special council meeting, that was February 4th.
And it was tabled, or it was?
We will discuss that next month.
What, I want to answer that. I didn't hear what you said. What was the reasoning? I didn't hear it.
So, you want me to explain?
If you'd like.
The motion that's on the minutes for the approval was just to go to an executive session, and the President did state in his motion why we are going to close session, and that's not on here on the minutes for us to approve.
Okay, 'cause I didn't hear that.
Right. So, he got them written down, so he's going to bring them in, so we can get them corrected, so we can approve the minutes properly.
Okay, very good. But this is the other thing. I don't believe your mics are working properly. Thank you.
I'll try to speak louder. If you can, Henry, just let me know, please.
Uh, Henry Mortella, Sheenland Drive. Uh, I was up, uh, last month with a couple of safety concerns. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, you said that you would, uh, try to contact Susan Hogan. I wondered if you had a hold of her about the property to the north of mine. Were you able to contact?
I'll discuss that afterwards.
Okay. And also, the code enforcer. Uh, were you able to contact him? You were.
I will talk to him about that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Fine finished business. The Genesee County Sheriff Department report. Comments, any discussion? Good enough, let's move on. The Street Administrator.
The one truck's still in. Trying to put salt spreader on it. We can use it for stone if we ever get it back. It's been there eight days. Uh, keep an eye on the water. And as soon as it dries, we've got some gravel in, but there's no use making more mud than we already got. So, as soon as it dries up, we've got gravel to put out, and we'll get the road grated and get them back to change, but we need some dry days. Ethan's back. He came back last Wednesday from his surgery, so we're back to having two people. I understand the electrician's going to be looking at the park and get at it now that the weather's starting to turn. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Question, Mr. President?
Please.
Um, Pete brought up the, uh, electric for the park, and it was my understanding when we first made a motion, and I believe the gentleman was out at Davidson, that we went with a different electrician because we didn't get a response in two weeks, and that was three months ago or so. So, I guess I didn't understand the urgency for us to switch right away. Maybe something just fell apart, I don't know. But would it be right, since the original motion was to have the gentleman do the work, that we can go back and request his assistance?
We did talk about that, and, uh, the reason being is that there was some electrical issues in the building here, uh, in the salt barn and in the garage, and rather than to keep messing with the guy. I, I know the gentleman very well, and he's having trouble with his parents who live in Florida, and they're not doing real well. And he couldn't give me any kind of answer, wouldn't do anything, so we went forward. As we, I do believe that the electrician is down there evaluating what has to be done. Uh, I talked to him this afternoon about, uh, the overhead wires, and, uh, we have a recommendation, which I would assume that you looked at, from the Parks and Rec Committee, and they would like to see that go underground. I can't argue with them about that, but, uh, Mr. Foster was going to look at that and then tell us what additional costs there might be for that, and/or, uh, taking out that pole up there and putting a receptacle down there at the top of the hill where our Commons Monument is. Uh, I'm sure by next month, we will know exactly what's happening. But now that the weather is, well, if we're going to go underground, it can be done, it can be done a little cheaper than what it could have been during the winter rates, too.
Build a replament from an aerial to come back down?
It's no big deal. You just take off the upper mast and basically go down with it. In essence, that's the way it's doing. We'll have to do a little something with the, uh, going through the river, which is no issue. Any other comments on it? Uh, we have the Good Times in Goodrich.
I don't think you know the Parks and Rec yet.
Uh, I will let you speak here in a little bit. Uh, do you want to talk now? My, my, excuse me.
What?
Please.
That's order.
Please, come on, please.
Um, we are part of the Goodrich Village Parks and Rec Committee, um, and we appreciate what you just said about the electricity. Um, we want to drive home with that. Um, that we do recommend all eight members of the Parks and Rec Committee unanimously agree that it should go underground. We realize it may cost a little bit, a little bit more, but, um, and the DPW would like to see it, um, go underground.
Yeah, hi. My name's Jess Mitch. Um, as far as the aesthetics, we, we've got a great group of people that are really working hard to make the park kind of more of a centerpiece of the community, and we believe that by, uh, putting the wires underground, it helps out to, you know, to go against that cause. Also on a safety concern, you know, having wires overhead. You have kids in the park flying kites. You have people with, you know, doing construction, trimming trees and things like that. There's a safety concern, so we think that will better the community by moving it underground. And I think our last thing was efficiency. And again, it may be a short little, uh, cost at first, or a small cost at first, but we think in the long run, it will save the community money, so appreciate you listening to us today. Thank you.
And President, the village decided years ago to start putting those electric lines under, on the ground, and they have put them underground in town, and it's made an incredible difference. So, to put them in the air now, when we have this opportunity to at least start putting them underground in the park, um, we really want to stress, we think that's important. We'd really like to see electricity get done. Um, it's really been smooth sitting there for a long time, um, and we could use it.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't mean to step over you without letting you speak. I didn't know that you were wanting to speak. Okay, now, as we have smiles in the back, Good Times in Goodrich.
Mr. President, I just interrupted my account.
Go ahead.
Should we make a motion to accept the recommendation with the Parks and Rec Committee, or are you moving this to the planning board?
I would like to see what the costs are and then, you know, make sure that we're okay as far as any additional cost for the electrical. Because it will cost a little bit more to go underground, but I, I do believe this.
Thank you.
Now, we're getting things under order. Gentlemen, please.
Hi, Jim Green, Atlas, Michigan. I'm on Good Times in Goodrich along with Gary Schaefer. We put a proposal before the village to have a, um, just let me go, step back. Good Times in Goodrich, what we do is we provide, um, we support education, we support, um, the village and projects and going forward in athletics. So, that's what we try to do, is bring community together. What we're proposing this year is to have a one-day, uh, one-night beer tent downtown.
Yeah.
What, what we, what we propose to do for people that don't have coffee, um, we're a nonprofit, so the profits come back to the areas that we support. Um, we would get a license, we'll get approval from the school district for a waiver, even though they're out of school, that we're 500 feet. We've looked into this. Uh, we have current liability, we will have liability insurance, we'll have gated area, which would be the tennis courts, so we can secure no underage kids, uh, from drinking. We have visible armpits for anyone within the tent. We provide local law enforcement and security. We wouldn't serve any alcohol beverage past, um, 11:45 would be last call. We provide cleanup at the event, we provide lighting in and around the beer tent. That's what we propose for this year. Our festival's grown the last couple of years. I think many of you have been down there. Um, as the car show has grown, where our gate has grown, the businesses are getting better support in the restaurants, and even this year, we're talking about having a rally to support a downed officer, and we might have more, even more people supporting six restaurants. That's what we strive to do, is to build a community, and this, this would be helpful as a gathering point, and then have a little more fun to operate.
I personally don't see a problem. Years and years ago, we had one, and then, uh, fund days went away for a long time, so. At times, at that time, we didn't really have a place to gate it off. Gate it off right there, gate it one way in, one way out. They're not going to be in there at, uh, very easy to control on that tennis court.
And I did mention, we would provide security within Good Times in Goodrich on our committee. We have local police officers that are involved with us that are Genesee County Sheriff, so they're involved, too, so they would have a presence there, too. So, we, we, we take the security and, and our village very seriously. We don't want any accidents. That's why we don't want, that's why we didn't request a two-day tent. We don't want a beer garden, you know, two-day binge. We want to have fun, gathering music, bringing community together. That's our goal.
I guess my one question that I would have. Um, we had the, uh, the blow-up slide and whatnot in the tennis courts here last year. Do we even know if those gentlemen are coming back again?
We, we haven't set our schematic of our, that's our next meeting, what we're going to do. We, we've been, the school has been very kind with us. If we had to move the kid's zone from the tent, I don't think it, logistically, it'd be a problem. Um, we, we still want different zones where there's family safe zones, just like if you go to Comerica, they've got family zones. We want to keep it family-friendly. It's very important to us. But there's still time for adult fun, too.
Anything else? Comments?
I'm good. Getting a bit confident.
Uh, I guess at this point, we can, uh, if you guys have any recommendations, we can kind of table this until next month, or if you want to go forward.
I think they need to move forward because they've got to go out of ducks and get in a row.
A lot of ducks.
A lot of ducks. Well, they go down the river, I've got them.
We got the duck race, yes.
Okay, so I guess we'll be looking for a motion.
I make a motion, we allow the Chamber of Commerce to go forward with their beer tent on the tennis court where it's gated.
For fund days. Good Times, or whatever you want.
Good Times.
Good Times.
Good Times. Looking for support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
That was McCafferty's question. And it's, you're just referring to the tent, or are you approving the receptacle? Because, I mean, he did, it's included in this, but there's a little more.
Benny.
Just, just to prove the proposal.
Yes, I think that's what Pete was doing.
I think that's what we should be doing.
Okay. Is that what, was that your intent, Pete?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Okay. McCafferty.
Yeah.
Maureen.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes. All right, gentlemen, thank you. Very much, and your support. Code enforcement, Dave is not here, but I understand he is home.
Yes, he's here.
I don't know if you've talked to him, but if not, I.
Uh, I talked to him about him.
Budget information. This is where the assessor regarding our tax base, uh, she's informed the office here that there's going to be an increase of about $12,000 from our current budget. Uh, state revenue project, uh, projection is the village can receive about $4,500 additional funds. The Act 51 is expected to increase substantially, yada, yada, yada. Any comments on this, any discussion?
Well, I'm seeing with a few things on here that I have, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
All right.
A few things that I have issues on here. The consideration should be given for employees' increases, employment payment and insurance should be made the same. Just because we're getting more money in, I don't think we need to just start spending it out. Not that I don't respect our employees, take the same stance as I did last year. Uh, also, I think we need to get a little more of an understanding on what our costs may be, uh, for the two pending lawsuits that we have going on. Uh, that I mentioned in this. Again, just because we have extra money coming in, let's not blow it.
This is just kind of a brief summary as far as what's coming up in this lobby handled in our budget, meetings that we're going to have to do, and I, I guess we really need to, uh, consider that, uh, sometime early in April, we should start working on this, get an idea of how many meetings we're going to have to have. At least get ones we can break ground real quick. And I'm really not sure when she goes in for her surgery, the first April, Tuesday.
Yes.
Is that what it is, the first?
Right, then she's out for the lead for surgery.
Still, we shouldn't be working on and off, but she would be working on some of those. I guess when she gets back from vacation, we'll find if we can do that and see if we can schedule something, maybe even before. Yeah, it's going to be tough. I guess we'll just, everybody think about, you know, what works for you and what days.
I think Saturday for two and a half weeks.
Second week of April?
I, I.
So, we're going to find out what Jackie.
Yeah, right, and we'll, we'll get together to just, everybody's got heads up here that it's coming?
Yeah, I'm out, uh, April 1st through, I'm back the 18th.
This is going to be a quick one. Last week of March, first week of April.
Pete, what have you done?
I think Saturday for two and a half weeks.
That's her. You bet I can handle this thing. Yeah, Rick's on the back. The first.
You got anything?
Last, last week of March, first week of April.
Shoot around there and see if we can do it. Anything else on that? Everybody's good? The sidewalks.
Nothing on them at the moment. Soon as the weather gets nice, we'll cut them all off.
Mr. McKinney is not here, and I have not heard anything, one way or another, on anything. Uh, the code of conduct for the elected officials, I know we're working on that, or Jackie was working on that, is working on that. We did have our little meeting. When was it we had that, uh, that somewhere, it's supposed to be three weeks ago, four weeks ago? Went very well. We have copies of that. If anybody wanted to look at it.
Aight.
Uh, personnel policy is something else, too, that, uh, I know that, uh, we're working with, uh, other municipalities and looking at what they have done. Attorneys, M and L, not much other than working on it. Any questions on the personnel policy? New business? Everybody's had time to look at this, understand. This is Resolution 2016 dash zero three. This is the FOIA. The sheriff is going to step down. What we're going to do is we're going to, uh, have whether it be the village president and/or the village attorney overseeing and do the FOIA request now. The office personnel will be giving them the information that is necessary, and then that will be put together by, whether it's the village president or village attorney. Because of the legal problems that we've had in late, I would like to, uh, initially go with the village attorney, see how it works. I would work with him a little bit, try to understand what it is that he's doing. That way, we know it's going to be done correctly. We won't run into any more problems in the future. Looking for any kind of discussion.
Couple of questions, please. Um, the process that we had before, um, from what I'm reading, and the village of, uh, Goodrich, uh, the Deputy Clerk's job description, that Pam was the Figment Information Coordinator in the past. So, would she fill that information out, or the requests, wherever it may be, and then get the approval from the administrative report was handed off?
Well, I, 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 I think to an extent, I don't know how close it was, and I know that you, everybody should have received the packet of information, and I gave in to two things that I requested. It was number one, that it would be approved or reviewed by village administrator and/or president, and that, uh, if there were any deviations from the request, that there'd be a written explanation. Uh, I have been told that that really may not be enough, that we should, uh, watch ourselves a little closer. So, if that's said for a little bit, I would like to see the village attorney take the, the lead.
Well, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, because I'm looking at her charter on the duties of the President. And I don't believe it states anything in here that you should have the requirements to take this job on. Uh, that is an administrative position. For one, if it were to get passed with the village president to be in here, I think personally, and it's not a disrespect to you, but you'd be doing a disservice to yourself in the future Presidents coming into here. Um, this job is again for, um, an administrative position, and when I look on the, uh, FOIA Act or the State of Michigan, it does state in there, it's for the Chief Officer of the Administrator, that would be the FOIA Coordinator. My other concern is if we're going to be using the attorney, and there's going to be costs associated with this, when you go to have the FOIA, uh, request will fill, so to speak. There's charges and stuff that, uh, we can set, and it's a standard amount that's in there. How are we going to afford the attorney, or why are we going to be paying our own cost to have the attorney to review this, when somebody should kind of have the common knowledge, if you will, if they're filling out a FOIA request correctly or not? I don't see the, I don't see why we're changing a policy to protect the village when we should be possibly changing the employees that can't fulfill their duties as their position is stated.
I guess that could be the way that you would look at it. I would look at it to where, uh, for right now, it seems to be an awful lot of issues in the village, and to better serve the residents, I think right now that we do need the attorney to look at it. Only temporarily, but for a while, so that, uh, everybody understands. And I guess you'd look at it as where it'd be kind of a learning curve for President, let's say. And then that probably would be turned down to the next acting President. But at least we'd have some guidelines to go with to make sure we were doing it right, kind of paying for an education, I guess, in a sense.
How, how many of these requests on average occur, like, in any given month, quarter, year?
I would have to go back and.
Not many.
Not many.
Maybe 10 a year. There are not as much as, as you would think. I mean, it depends.
Right.
There's no way to, you know.
Right. But just to, like, get, get a, a weight of having, you know, the. But just to like get a weight of having, you know, the, you know, how long would it take to have, you know, the attorney go through everything and then explain something to somebody and be able to fully understand it if there's only a couple a year?
The problem, the way I see it, is interpretation. And that's the big key on it. On what you're looking at and what the information that you're giving them. Once again, I just think to better serve the community, to start with, and working closely with the attorney. Hopefully, not very long and not to any major expense to the village. And turn it over to the acting president.
I think you'll find that's what the township does, they turn all theirs over to the attorney.
That's what Shirley does.
Because when they put in their any and all, what is any and all?
Means everything you've got.
It's not, not okay.
What are you pointing at me for?
Somebody said it back.
I didn't say it!
Please, please, please. Once again, I think it's better served if we let Mr. McKenney do this for a little bit and to instruct me on how to do it and what to look for.
Yes.
Has Mr. McKenney given us a price on what it would cost to?
I would assume he would charge us his hourly fee. I wouldn't think it would take him very long to do it. Our staff is still putting it together. And we would be charging for the office staff, but not for the attorney.
So if I may, because I want to make sure that you guys are going to approve something properly here. That designates the village president, the village attorney as a FOIA coordinator, I don't understand why we don't read. Because you also have in here, he or she can authorize the designee other village staff to act. Why wouldn't this thing be worded more or less, because I think Pat did a good job at fulfilling these and unfortunately we're just a little misguided in the process. Why wouldn't she stay in here or whoever the deputy clerk may be with language saying it will be reviewed by the village attorney?
Then you're still paying for him to review it, that's what it is.
You still are, but you're not giving him the power or yourself, the FOIA coordinator.
But what he is doing is he would be working with me and guiding me. I'm kind of paying for the education in a sense. This is what I'm not saying. But I certainly don't want to go through anything again. I want it to be done correctly.
Those are my thoughts.
Mine too. Any other discussion? Not looking for a motion, but.
One more question I thought I might before the motion goes. Again, I brought up the charter of the duties of the president. And I know we just went through this at the X meeting, so to speak. And I believe it was stated in there that you would have your state law, your charter and then the ordinance, so to speak. And this would be in orders that we're trying to go on. But the charter is going to trump the ordinance, so you're kind of passing something that you're still not going to be able to do. Because the charter states you have the same authority as we all do. You just run the meetings, you're allowed to sign off on stuff if need to be and whatnot. And that's about the extent of it. In order to be another coordinator, whatnot in here, really, and I'm not pointing at you saying we're doing anything wrong. I'm just saying those aren't your duties as a president.
If they're not my duties as a president?
Right. So I'd hate to pass something in here and where our charter is just going to automatically trump it out.
Well, you know, I would like to make a motion that the attorney act as the coordinator.
Support. So hang on. Don't get ahead of yourself. We just make this break. So basically, you just want to scratch off the village president.
Correct.
And just have the village attorney in.
Correct.
Do you have those corrections, Pat?
Right, yeah.
So it's just the village attorney as coordinator.
We'll scratch that up.
We have. Just a second. So now we're looking for a roll call vote unless there's any other discussion. Let's do the roll call, please.
McCafferty?
Yeah.
Maureen?
Yes.
Vic?
No.
Baldwin?
Yes. Meeting time change. You guys are aware of it, the township has done the same thing. They've changed their time of the meetings. They've gone a little earlier. We don't have to move on this, just food for thought. What your thoughts are as far as setting the meeting time earlier than seven o'clock? It's just kind of a discussion.
What time are you talking about? Six o'clock?
Just something to talk about, that's all. Do we even want to consider it? Do we want to make it February? How much earlier?
I think we'll make it earlier.
If I remember correctly, it was a February one. January probably, maybe in December. Will we set the dates and time already in the resolution?
This would have something to do in the future coming up.
Okay. So would it still be for this year or is this going to go into the next?
I think you do that July.
I think it's July. It'll be somewhere. That's why there's nothing.
There's right.
Just discussion if there's any interest in it.
I don't know that I could, for me, I couldn't go much earlier than six o'clock.
And now six o'clock would work because that would give me time to get home from work.
You making that a motion?
We don't have to do that. We can just something to think about. He's not here and he should be probably part of the. I was going to say, I don't think he closes in any of us. Something to think about, we'll discuss it in the future. With that said, I guess we're back to public comment.
I'm calling Consiglio and I live on Schuman Drive. I'd just like to bring up the fact that they're proposing a multi-family development or apartment complex at the corner of Heagle and Schuman. As a resident of that nice cul-de-sac and a nice piece of property, we are strongly against any type of rezoning for that area. And feel that it's, one, coming over the hill, it's going to be unsafe just for the traffic problems there. The access to Schuman and Heagle has also been created a safety issue, especially for the kids in that area as well as the schoolchildren. And I don't believe the land has the capability to sustain the type of development we're talking about. And as a resident there, we purchased that property knowing that we had a single-family dwellings there. And we weren't anticipating an apartment complex there. We'd like to urge you guys to vote against that and not approve that type of change to our village here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I lost my shoe. Norm Bass, over here in our condo project over there. I would like you, Mr. Chairman, to see if the street administrator could review our roads over there. It looks like we're in the process of needing some crack filling and slight maintenance. I'm not trying to, you know, push on the budget, okay? But if we can in the next month or two, review what we're dealing with over there and see what we can come up with. The most, you know, the easiest way of trying to fix what we got over there. But it is in dire need of some maintenance right now. Okay, thank you.
Edward Wirtal, Schuman Drive. I overheard you tell Pat, Sheriff, there that you hadn't talked to the code enforcer. So and being that you're going to bring this up under council, I want to have a chance to ask you, tell them next month. But I know you haven't talked to the code enforcer yet about the unsafe condition right there at that very same location on Heagle and Schuman. So I'm asking you to inform the code enforcer about that safety problem we have there. And at the same time, I'm asking if this municipality can't service us with some mosquito tablets. Most municipalities do for the residents for swampy areas. Because we're going to need a big time this year with the seven acres that are totally flooded. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council comments, anybody?
Couple of quick things. I did receive the packet for the lawsuits and whatnot, the FOIA request that was in there. I know you had stated that there was going to be an investigation done on what went wrong, so to speak. That was done or if it's still taking place. And going through here and reading this, I won't go into too much details, but it looks like there's some information that's missing from the actual FOIA request documents. I got the first half, you can see where the lawsuit starts and then what came about after it, what was, when they actually fulfilled the FOIA request is not in there. So I was wondering if I could get a copy of those.
Very good. There's a lot more information out there. All I just kind of just gave you, you know, bits and pieces, something at the start.
Yeah.
But you can be asked for more, you can get more.
I appreciate it. And the other thing that I have is that there is a policy now, not totally against, but had some concerns on it. When we are requesting information, that we have to sign for that information. I do believe that I'm the only one that has signed in for information. I don't really understand why that has started all of a sudden. And I'm kind of referring to the, what had started it was the payroll sheets for the DPW. I believe I missed about two or three months. I spoke with you on those, Mr. President. You said you hadn't received them either. I think somebody took a little bit of offense to that. And I got a pretty good email stating that any more further requests, I have to either put in running or to sign for. If that's the case, then I guess I need copies of everybody's on the council, whatever they're picking up, even if they are, I don't know. Just thought I'd let you know, be a little signal out here.
I will, I will find out. I.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Last month, it was brought to council's attention about the fill and some problems over on Schuman Drive. And yes, I did talk to Susan Hogan about a variety of things. Dave will be back out there as soon as the weather permits and they will be doing work out there again.
Dave who?
Dave works for the drain commissioner.
Over in Marquette?
Yeah, he's the guy that's out there, which you've probably talked to him. I don't want to talk to anybody direct here. He is going to take and come out there. He's pretty confident that he knows where the problem is and it's between the two little areas that are, I think you call them the wetlands. I did research. I can't find where there's any wetlands in there.
There are.
Not to my knowledge. I looked and I can't find. You can look, Register of Deeds, County Clerk, Agricultural, and you found it?
No, there are no wetlands in that area. That word does not exist in that area.
I have a map here and it says on this map that there are no wetlands in there.
Your map?
So there are no.
Is it our designation?
It doesn't meet the criteria. Anyway, with that said.
There's not acres of water?
It's a lake, it's a lake.
It's certain things. The soil, the vegetation, the habitat, hydrology comes into play. And I'm just telling you that this map right here, if you'd like to look at it, you'd go to the Register of East County Clerk, it's the same thing. There's no.
Wetland is a designation.
The drain will be worked on. It, since November, I guess, they've been going through the motions of working on it. But they reassured me that it will be taken care of here this spring as soon as they can get it through and work on it. The code enforcement, I will get with Dave. He just got back. Obviously, it was sometime within the last week or so from his vacation. And I will get with him and we will have him going out there and see what he can do. As far as those holes out there, I did talk with the engineer that was out there. And he assured me that he would take and go through there and he would fill those holes as soon as the weather load restrictions permitted. He will get out there and he will do that. And I feel very comfortable that he will because number one, he wants things. So we can kind of, I guess you'd say dangle the carrot and we can probably get some things out of him. But those holes will be resolved. The other stuff down in there, I'll have to see if we can take and get him to pull that out. But the holes, he assured me that he would take care of them.
I just.
You were there with us.
Yeah, it's a matter of when.
I can't answer that.
No, I'm just saying, a kid can go there tomorrow.
I can't argue that. I will try to get a hole in and see if I can get somewhat of a date. But he's got to get in there with equipment and it's pretty hard to work on equipment right now. It's pretty soft out there to be moving dirt. The next thing, as far as the proposed development up there. You're talking about a zoning issue to start with. Planning Commission zoning, this is all very much in the infancy, what they come in here and attempted to do. It's kind of a feasibility thing is what he's doing right now. We'll have to wait and see what he comes back with. Really don't know. I did talk to him about sanitaries. He has some plans. I kind of threw some things back and forth. There's nothing that's cast in stone. I'll see if I can get this guy to come over and take a look at the road over there. See if we can do something in the road. The mosquito thing, I think that's a good idea and I think we should look into it. Maybe we can spray the village.
I think we need to get the village sprayed.
I think we should look.
There's tablets that they throw in the swamps. And they did help.
Well, there's a variety of ways, but I think we should look into some options because I think that they're well-served for community. I think I answered your question, Mr. Vic. I guess with that, if there's nothing else. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone.